I have to go up there and synchronize the bells thoroughly.
The bells are all ringing.
Take care of that tomorrow.
Take care of that tomorrow.
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, May 3, 2016, meeting of Middletown City Council Order. If you please stay and join me in a moment meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Ms. Bronston, here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here.
All right, I received no citizen comment cards this evening, so we can move on to our presentations. A couple of proclamations. I'd like to invite Ms. Leann Hood down from our Corrections Group for one. Thanks for coming down.
You're welcome.
It's certainly a great privilege to be able to recognize the work that so many of our folks do here in the city. And this week is National Corrections Officers Week in the city of Middletown, and have a proclamation to recognize their hard work and dedication in dealing with some challenging situations, and certainly for the work they do in, do day in and day out. So on behalf of City Council, proclamation reads, whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of the inmates in our nation's prisons and jails. Their position is essential to the day-to-day operations of these institutions. Without them, it would be impossible to achieve the foremost institutional goals of security and control. And whereas, the city of Middletown is privileged to have a group of men and women who are trained professionals and who serve on a daily basis unarmed in the city's municipal facilities, these professionals, with little thought to their own personal safety, serve violently to provide humane conditions of confinement while ensuring security. And whereas, correctional officers' duties have become increasingly complex and demanding, they are called upon to fill simultaneously custodial, supervisory, and counseling roles. The professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserves our utmost respect. And whereas, the daily management of inmates requires special training and sound judgment and courage. These correctional officers and correctional officer supervisors provide essential services and exemplify the highest of professional standards by their commitment to the city of Middletown Municipal Jail. Now therefore I, by the powers vested in me as mayor of the city of Middletown, Butler and Warren County, state of Ohio, deem it appropriate to honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are a vital component of the field of corrections, and do hereby proclaim May 1 through May 7, 2016, as National Corrections Officers Week in the city of Middletown. Congratulations, Leann. Appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you.
Would you like to offer a few words?
Uh, I hadn't really...
Put you on the spot. Okay.
Very good. The Corrections Officers, I didn't realize what a great group of employees we had until I actually started supervising them directly. They just are really on top of things and treat the inmates with such fairness and respect. I just, you know, had no idea because I was in patrol for so many years, but we really do have a great group of individuals that work in our jail.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate their work.
Right. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Lay down from the letter carriers group. Oh, come on down. Looked for the uniform and didn't recognize...
I'm not a letter carrier. She is working over.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, you know, I was going to say, even on sunny days. Well, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. This is also a great honor to recognize the work that goes on. Our letter carriers annually conduct a food drive through the collection efforts, and I think they collect many, many thousands of cans and pounds of food, and we've got that documented here in the proclamation, but certainly want to recognize the work they do on this special event. So on behalf of council, we have this proclamation to present. Whereas, the National Association of Letter Carriers have designated the day of May 14, 2016, as the 22nd Annual Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. And whereas, the NLAC Food Drive collected a record 71 million pounds of food nationally, and 33,784 pounds of food in Butler County in 2015, and over 1.2 million pounds of food since 1995. And whereas, thousands of family caught in the slow economic recovery will have access to this needed and nourishing food through Shared Harvest Food Bank's network of food pantries. And whereas, the AFL-CIO, Shared Harvest Food Bank, Feeding America, and countless community volunteers will lend assistance to this charitable endeavor, with the United States Postal Service encouraging and supporting this one-day food drive. Now therefore I, Lawrence Mulligan, mayor of Middletown, county of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, to assist public awareness of this nationwide endeavor to care for our own, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 14, 2016, as the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day. And further, on behalf of all municipal officials and administration, I do hereby request all citizens of our community support the efforts of this national annual drive by placing non-perishable food by their mailboxes on May 14, 2016, to help meet the needs of our neighbors here locally. Thank you for coming down and appreciate all the work you do. Would you like to offer a few words about it? See if you've got some... Put you on the spot, too. Oh, thank you.
We've been doing this thing since 1995 was our first year. In Butler County, since 1995, we've collected 1.2 million pounds of food. Phenomenal number. But what its components is, it's so easy. On that Saturday morning, just leave your canned goods in the mailbox. Letter carriers do all the work, along with a lot of volunteers. They bring the food in, they take it. One of the great things about this program is, the food never leaves Butler County. It goes to Shared Harvest Food Bank, and it stays to local pantries. If you get a chance, Saturday afternoon, visit about after 3 o'clock the local post office, and you'll see the food coming in. Then you can travel, follow the semi to Shared Harvest to watch it being collected. Then it has to be sorted at the throwaway, the older food and stuff. It's a lot of hands-on with canned goods. But the end user is the local pantries and shelters. As you know, in today's world, the family income is getting, seems like less and less, harder to harder to feed a family, so there is emergency food there. In Butler County, you can get food. And it's because of the people in Middletown and in Butler County contributing to this food drive, it's there. This time of year, the need heightens for the pantry because they don't have access to the other sources. So this is kind of the gap from now to school starts. But you can imagine 1.2 million pounds of food because of the gracious citizens of Butler County, and because, I'd like to thank you all for the proclamation. This is the smallest group I've ever seen in council.
It's a nice day, so maybe that's a good... But thanks for coming down.
That probably means you're doing something right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Appreciate your work. Thank you. With that, Mr. Atkins, we can move to your city manager reports.
Yes, Your Honor. This evening, if I can, I'm going to switch things around a little bit. I did send out an email earlier today. We've been working on a number of different projects over the last couple of weeks, and we do have two that need to be covered under executive session this evening. One of them involves somebody that needs to travel north of here, and so I would like to move, with your permission, the executive session up to this portion of the meeting. And I would ask council to put a motion on the floor for executive session, under the authority of a higher revised Code 121.22G4, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and also under the authority of a higher revised Code 121.22G8, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or to negotiations with other political subdivisions, requesting, respecting requests for econ... Yes, respecting requests for economic development assistance, provided that both of the following conditions apply. Number one, the information is directly related to requests for economic development assistance as be provided or administered under any provision of Chapter 715, 725, 1724, or 1728, or Section 701.07, 3735.67 to 3735.70, 5709.40 to 5709.43, 5709.61 to 5709.69, 5709.73 to 5709.75, or 5709.77 to 5709.81 of the revised code, or that involves public infrastructure improvements, or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. And two, a unanimous quorum of the public body determines by a rule call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant, or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project.
Okay. Thank you for reading that for me. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
All right. We will recess to executive session. Following the executive session, we'll come back and reconvene here in council chambers.
Your Honor, we will be in the police train.
Counsel. Good to be all set. Good to go. All right. Okay, I'd like to call our meeting back to order, returning from our executive sessions. Mr. Atkins said he's finished with the city manager report, so we can move to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank.
With your consideration, this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from April 19, 2016, to confirm the personnel appointments of Sarah Fox, staff attorney for the law department, Darren McGuire, maintenance worker, public works, utilities department, sewer maintenance division, Henry Morgan, Morganson, maintenance worker, public works and utilities department, stormwater division, and Sarah Strunk, correction officer, Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, to receive and file board and commission minutes from the Board of Zoning Appeals, January 6, 2015, the Architectural Review Board of May the 12, 2015, store commission from October 22, 2015, planning commission from December 9, 2015, library board minutes from January 19, February 16, and March 15, 2016, the Division of Visitors Board from February 15 and March 14, 2016, to receive and file OHS of office for Luke Agee, Millicent Jackson, Joyce Morris, and Christopher Smith, to receive and file letters of credit guaranteeing public improvements constructed as part of Hendrickson Road Extension in the New England Heights, to receive, file, and approve the final plaque for the New England Heights Section 11, and a proclamation recognizing Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through the 7, 2016.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
All right. We have one motion out this evening?
To approve the sale of city-owned vacant lot at 200 Courier Road to Christa... I'm sorry, to Richard and Kathy Atkins for $500.
Okay. Do we have most adopt?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Atkins, anything else besides the staff report?
No, Your Honor. It's a house that we had demolished at 200 Courier. After demolition, the Atkins had required about purchasing the property. At the time, we did not own it. However, we were able to get the land bank to acquire it, transfer it to the city. It is now ready to be sold to the Atkins, and for the record, I don't know who they are. They're not related.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
All right. And that brings us to council comments. Start this evening, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two brief comments. Wanted to apologize to the staff and council for missing from the last meeting. You all know where I was, but for anybody that's watching my home, we had to make up under the emergency room on the doctor's orders about two hours before the meeting, so I'm sorry for the hiccup there. Also wanted to thank production team for getting everything up on YouTube so that I could prepare for this meeting and be able to vote on the consent agenda this evening. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
Well, thank you. Number one, let's see, last Friday, a few of us were at the triple moon year, one-year anniversary, and it was a great ribbon cutting ceremony. Saturday, Earth Day, Mr. Atkins and I were out there, and 233 of our closest friends were out there helping clean up, paint, and did a tremendous job all over the city. Painted fire hydrants, painted signs, picked up a lot of litter. Great day. Everybody showed up. Yesterday, at the park board meeting, they're trying to hope for another 250, so 500 people working next year on the cleanup. Next item is sad week last week with the incident with the two little boys that were beaten, one of which passed away. I found out that the folks from Baraka Church are going to pay for the funeral, and Reverend Lamar Farrell is going to be presiding over that. It will be at the Baker Stevens Paramore Funeral Home from 10 to 11, and then the funeral will be actually at 11. And then I guess they're going to be shipping the body back over to Adams County or something like that. Baker's going to take it over there. Also, this Saturday, at the Middletown Rotary Club, which I'm a member of, I've been responsible for the plantings at University and Central Avenue, the two sections on either side of Central Avenue there at University. We're going to get out again this year, and we're going to plant all the flowers and everything in there. The Rotary Club has graciously said they would take that project on as their yearly event. So we'll be doing that Saturday morning. Looks like the weather's going to be good, so we'll get that taken care of. So that's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Bohannon said, very tragic week for us last with these two triple... I want to take a second to commend our police and fire departments for everything they've done, they have done in this. I had heard on the radio that the police department was involved with helping pay for this, Phil.
What's going to happen is, the fire department and the police department have both raised money that they're going to have an after funeral dinner, and they're paying for that.
And I want to commend them for doing that as well. I also heard that perhaps there were some private citizens involved with helping, so I want to commend them as well. Hopefully, we never have something like this happen in our city again.
All right. Ms. Bronston?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Seroptimist Scholarship Banquet, also the Self Dinner. And when I went to the Self Dinner, I found out that Karen Maney was being honored, and I thought that was really a great dinner, but I thought it was even greater for Middletown to be represented. Karen does a lot for our community here, and she supports me on all of my endeavors, so my hat's off to Karen. We attended the Middletown Lyric Theater production called Working: A Miracle, and we have such a treasure in the Middletown Lyric Theater. It was the funniest production. All of the participants were very professional, and it was a good night out. Also, we went to the Women's Symphony Luncheon. They had a musician there, Mr. Eddie Osborne, who's a well-accomplished musician, and us ladies had a wonderful time, and we were entertained by the only man in the place, and the music was great. So that was a lot of fun. And speaking of symphony, there is a symphony coming up. I forget what date that production will be at the Dave Finkelmann. I think my son might be honored there. I get all my dates confused, so he's doing a lot right now for graduation. And First Friday's around the corner. We have a lot going on in Middletown, and our NAACP Louis F. Cox, A.K. Steel Scholarship Banquet will be held at Forest Hills on Thursday night. If anyone still needs tickets, Patty Caldwell will take care of those things, and should be a great time. And that ends my comments.
Thank you. I, too, would like to extend my thoughts and prayers to the family of Alexander Stevens, the young man who passed away, and as well as for, as was mentioned, the police and fire departments, for the members that responded that day. It's certainly a very tragic event and something we wouldn't want to have repeated. You know, our first responders many times don't know what they're getting into when they get the call, and, you know, they certainly encountered something that they don't want to experience again, and certainly very difficult. So want to remember them and their efforts. As was mentioned, Triple Moon Coffee celebrated their grand opening. That was our third ribbon cutting, I think, in downtown Middletown in the month of April, so a nice, nice run there. And found out Pendleton will be celebrating their five-year anniversary here in downtown. While that wasn't the very start of our activities downtown Middletown, it's certainly a nice milestone to see them doing, doing so well five years later. See some new paint going up on the buildings, as well as new Art Central mural going up on Governor Square. So a lot of great things happening downtown. And then on the east end, I was excited to see the groundbreaking for some of the outlot developments on the, at the town mall. So I think we're seeing some real solid activity throughout the city, and I'm very, very encouraged by that. Also had the privilege today, along with, I think, council member Bronston, Vice Mayor Bronston, doing the science fair at the middle school. A lot of fun hearing from the eighth graders on their projects, and certainly appreciate all the work that went into them, and a number of community volunteers. Mr. Atkins was there, and the fire chief was there, lots of others, I think. So a great, great day, and good to see the kids doing some exciting things in school. So with that, we can move to our legislation for this evening. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. Seven items tonight, and all we're asking you to consider as an emergency. So before getting started, I'd ask for motion to waive charter provisions regarding second readings for Resolution R. 2016-09, R. 2016-010, R. 2016-11, R. 2016-12, Ordinance O. 2016-12, O. 2016-13, O. 2016-14.
I make a motion to suspend the charter that requires reading on two separate days for the following items: Resolution R. 2016-09, R. 2016-10, R. 2016-11, R. 2016-12, and Ordinance 2016-12, Ordinance 2016-13, and Ordinance 2016-14, and call them emergency measures to be read one time.
And we have second.
Second.
Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Okay. First matter will be Resolution R. 2016-09, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2016, declaring an emergency having to do with the general fund.
Do we have permission to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. I had mentioned last year that I had had dinner one night with several civic groups in town, and they had asked what they could do to help us move the city forward, get things cleaned, take on projects. As we got heading towards the spring this year, several of them have stepped up and said they would like to take over certain parks and certain areas and clean up the city, but they needed extra materials to do it. They have the labor, but needed the mulch, building materials, paint, stain, and other tools to complete those projects. With that in mind, we have those projects set up, and we are asking for $10,000 to the park and maintenance budget to allow us to purchase the extra materials to allow those projects to go forward.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Thank you. Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next matter will be Resolution R. 2016-10, a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain real property located at the southwest corner of Columbia Avenue and Verity Parkway, and declaring an emergency.
Do we have permission to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. We've talked about this briefly before, but the old senior center is coming up for review. Cincinnati State does not have a future use for that building. HEP is considering putting the market, the building on the market. They have offered to transfer title back to the city for $20,000 they've incurred to date in purchasing and carrying costs associated with that building in lieu of putting it back out for sale. Staff has gone over in the staff report why we believe it's in our best interest to take that building back, protect that use. Once title's back with the city, we do, of course, have several options. We can market the property either internally or through a realtor. We can renovate it and use the space for city functions. We could demolish the building and use it for green space or park space. But at this time, we are recommending that we take title of that building back.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Atkins, do you foresee the building having value going forward, given some momentum we have downtown, if there's going to be folks that are going to look to buy this in a couple of years?
I think, I think you said exactly right. It's in the future. We have got a lot of projects on the board that are coming along, and that building does have some mechanical issues that we're going to have to address, but there is room in that building that's got a fair amount of footprint in, whether we expand from city offices and use it, or we rent some of it, or we get a developer to use it for another purpose. I think, yes, as time goes on, it has more value as it goes.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah. Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
The third matter will be Resolution R. 2016-11, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2016, declaring an emergency. So be the general fund, auto and gas fund, stormwater fund, and municipal garage fund.
Do we have permission to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Atkins?
Your Honor, I've brought this up at the retreat and at other places. The concept of a transformed Middletown crew was one that I had seen at the Seattle conference last year. This is a summer crew whose purpose is to pay attention to detail in our city. If it's trash, pick it up. If it's bent, straighten it. If it's faded or broken, replace it. If it's obsolete, remove it. If it needs paint, paint it. They would start on the boulevard system, work their way into the parks and neighborhoods and alleys as time permits. Earlier this year, one of our medic units was involved in an accident, is no longer suitable for use as an ambulance. However, we can retrofit it for about five grand that would allow us to put that and use that as our transport vehicle and to keep our tools and things. And we would like to try this as a project for this summer, see how much we can do on the boulevard system to make our town look better. If it works and we like it, we'll incorporate it into the next year's budget. This would also be in addition to the trustee prisoner cleanup program that I had brought to you earlier this year. So again, trying to get out and improve the look of our city through a summer program.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
It's going to be manned by Street Department?
Public Works. Yeah, we'll be overseeing it. Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. All right. Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Item number four will be Resolution R. 2016-12, a resolution to make adjustment to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, and for the period ending December 31, 2016, declaring an emergency. So appropriation transfer for the general fund.
Do we have permission to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. As we had previously discussed in giving a presentation, we have redone the employee recognition program in the city. One of the things that when I took over, we had some morale problems, and one of the many things we've tried to do is address pay, but also recognize employees that are doing good things. As part of that ideal, we would like to take some of the money that we are not spending this year for TV Middletown and take $5,500 and transfer it over for this purpose. This would allow us to do 61 longevity awards in 2016, another 73 longevity awards in 2017, plus the Extra Mile and Bright Idea Awards, as they were presented to you at a private council meeting. Small amount of money, but it allows us to give some well-deserved recognition to our employees. This is a transfer, not a supplemental appropriation.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Ms. Gankert, call the roll, please.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Okay. The next matter will be Ordinance number O. 2016-12, and ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a loan agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation and deliver a related note in the maximum principal amount of $452,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of constructing a two-lane with median access road of about 1,200 linear feet from Union Road to the proposed A.K. Steel Research and Innovation Center, and the chemical stabilization and asphalt paving of Wildwood Road, Barnett Street, Jewel Avenue, Wisconsin Street, Vermont Street, and South Main Street, as well as an alley along Barnett Park, together with the related improvements and all necessary appurtenances thereto, and authorizing the execution of any additional documents related thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Okay.